Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the February 20th, 2014 Business Meeting of the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. I will announce that we'll take the agenda out of order and do the Housing Authority Consent Agenda prior to Citizens' Communication. Therefore, we will convene this meeting as the Housing Authority Board for the first item. I'd like to welcome Paul Reynolds to my left, our Housing Authority Commissioner. Mr. Krupp will do the roll call.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Ludlow? Here. Commissioner Schrader and Commissioner Smith are out this evening, will not be in attendance, but both will be joining us via phone soon. So I ask you to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, Mr. Krupp, the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Yes, so we do have a consent agenda for approval to issue a request for proposals for development of new affordable housing units.
I'll ask the clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Tonight, we have approval to issue a request for proposals for development of new affordable housing units.
Do the Commissioners want to remove that from the consent agenda or discuss that single item? I will ask Commissioner Reynolds for a motion.
I move that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Reynolds, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to do the poll, please.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye.
You got one more.
You got Mr. Reynolds.
Oh, Mr. Reynolds, I'm sorry. Commissioner Reynolds.
All right, so the vote is four-zero, and when will the ladies be joining us via phone?
I'm not 100% sure on that.
You thought by now.
Yeah, I thought by now, yes.
Okay, fine. It's time for Citizens' Communication. If you do want to speak tonight, you'll want to turn in the blue card. Is that blue? Yes, it is. And so I'm going to call you up in twos. They are Kevin Johnson and Tina Olson, followed by Stephen Bates and Joe Haverkamp.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair Ludlow. I'm actually here not here for vittorance tonight, I'm actually here for the AMR contract. As I testified before, I've had to use them like not in the last couple of months myself. Passed out at an event with Mayor Lori Dreamer, and they were there approximately about four minutes within the access meeting, and you know the whole story. But what I am concerned about is this is a contract that I care deeply about because of the safety of the community, not but the money, the safety of the people. And I go over to Sandy, Boring, everywhere that is rural communities, and these rural people need this because it's time essential. And in the density areas, I mean, yeah, it's quick by road, but the density areas out there are needing this, and especially at Mount Hood, you know, because of the hills and everything. But I just want to urge the Commissioners, and I want to thank you guys for bringing this to the attention tonight for a vote finally, and I want to thank Mr. Krupp too for doing this, and I know this has been a grueling process for all of you, and I just want to thank you, you know, every single one of you, because I know you don't hear a lot of it, but I do, and this means a lot to me, so thank you for your time.
Tina, it's so nice that you come and thank us occasionally, and I appreciate that very much.
That's okay. I know you guys have a hard job.
Sometimes it's harder than other times.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Johnson?
Good evening. I read with interest the front-page article in yesterday's Clackamas Review about the Beaver Building Dams in Kellogg Creek. Apparently, some citizens were concerned about the number of trees that could be destroyed. They were told not to worry, the county will just plant more. After all, it's only taxpayer money, right? Besides the Beaver issue, a group named North Clackamas Urban Watershed Council was mentioned several times. Having never heard of this group and being curious, I once again went to the county website and the County Department of Water and Environment Services, WES. I find out that WES partners with NCUWC and others on watershed issues. NCUWC and five other partners received $152,000 of county grant money. One of the projects the NCUWC accomplished was to place 65 logs into Mount Scott Creek at North Clackamas Park for water quality and fish habitat. A noble cause, I suppose. The problem is, North Clackamas Park is a quarter-mile downstream from the apartments on Lake Road that flood almost every year. Now there is 65 more obstacles to water flow. The director of WES has told us they don't do stormwater management, but they are trying to solve this issue because they keep getting sued. WES is digging restoration ponds, retention ponds, and wetlands upstream from the apartments to try to stop some of the water from reaching the flood-prone apartments. So while WES tries to fix the flooding problem with money from one hand, they give money to a partner to help cause the problem with money from the other hand. A reasonable person would conclude they are not trying to fix the problem at all. I don't think this is a very good use of taxpayer money, and it certainly has not fixed the problem. WES, at least the stormwater side, is broken and needs new leadership.
Thank you. I'm an Oregon State Beaver, and I take great defense to what you just talked about. This is my personal opinion. All right, Mr. Bates and Ms. Haverkamp, followed by Mr. Savoy.
Ms. Haverkamp said that I should go first, just so that you know that I wanted ladies to go first, but she said for me to go first, so. Chair Ludlow, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to reference the last business meeting on February the 13th. During his soliloquy, Commissioner Bernard heralded the words "leader" and "leadership" and made reference to the Portland-Milwaukee Light Rail Project in the city of Milwaukee. I wish to point out that a true leader would not saddle a small city with a $5 million obligation without first identifying how to pay for it. A true leader would not leave the funding problem for others to solve. It is my understanding that the city of Milwaukee, in May, will be voting on the Jim Bernard Light Rail Tax a little over five years after he left office. Milwaukee's current choice between taxing itself for old light rail debt versus laying off city staff demonstrates a lack of responsible leadership. A true leader also would not saddle the county with a $25 million obligation without first identifying how to pay it. The people of Clackamas County are paying interest on an emergency loan to satisfy the light rail debts supported by the mayor-turned-commissioner. These examples show imperious tendencies, not leadership. They show a commitment to personal preferences over the will of the people. Commissioner's leadership is earned, and absent a true emergency, it is the result of developing consensus. The only emergencies involving light rail have been the funding emergencies created without the consult of the voters. True leaders will rally voters to support their visions, their ambitions, rather than simply impose them. The best way to lead by consensus is to occasionally pull the voters on contentious issues that are not business as usual. Mr. Bernard, if you were more willing to engage Clackamas County voters, I would not be here today for the express purpose of engaging you. Therefore, I urge this commission to give the voters direct input on the distribution of millions of dollars that have been siphoned away from the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and Fire District Number One. Two years ago, Clackamas County voters, by a 70-to-30 margin, voted and indicated that they wanted to rein in urban renewal spending. They wanted the money to be distributed back to where it was meant to go. Let the voters decide who deserves this money. Call for a vote of the people so that the urban renewal money can be returned to the Sheriff's Office and Fire District Number One. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard?
First off, I think that if you ask the city manager who was fired or let go at the city of Milwaukee, you would find that there was a plan to fund the $5 million, and there was a plan that he and I had worked on, but no one ever asked, and that's the problem. As far as urban renewal, I think your interpretation of what the voters voted on is quite different from what it actually says, which is any new urban renewal districts would be put forward to the vote of the people. I don't know where it said we're going to return the money.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader, can you hear me? Well, I was told she's online, but let's try that again. Commissioner Schrader? Oh, that's fancy new technology. Go ahead, Ms. Haverkamp.
For the voters, the gentleman sitting beside me happens to be running against Jim Bernard.
Can you mention his name, please, and where he lives?
Joe Haverkamp, Clackamas County. Referring to the last meeting, thank you, Bernard, for telling us exactly how much we would lose. We would have lost, we would give to the educational funds for the state of Oregon, $20 million. We then would receive $300,000 back. I don't think we want that. And about the sheriff, I know we're so, we want to give the sheriff money, all the money he wants, and that's great, but the sheriff gets, before the urban renewal, which is the Clackamas Town Center, he now gets four to five times more than he did then. And being an elected official myself, past elected official, the police never stop coming and asking for money. What I want to refer is to the last meeting. When Karen Bowerman, which is running also for office, and she's running against Paul Savis, she said that we also should give away the urban renewal money. I mean, you know, dissolve it and give it to whoever. It didn't matter how much our county loses. We are the taxpayers. We do not want to lose that money, and I don't care who someone is trying to, you know, make them feel better because they want to give them more money. Another thing that Karen said, that you all should sign a paper saying you will not take donations. Well, she is a candidate. How can a candidate come up here and tell you she's never, she never came before, I've been coming for a long time, she's never came before. The only time she's coming is when she can come and put the Commissioners down. Come on. Now, you shouldn't have to sign anything. That's ridiculous. There was on media, in fact, it was Mr. Bates's fundraiser, that they had the leader of the Metro West Company there. Now, you talk, you were also talking about, Martha mentioned about Third Solutions, Third Century Solutions. That is where people can funnel their money and not find out who it came from. And you said, Ludlow, that you'd used it in your election. I know you used it in your election because you got a lot of money from the gentleman in Las Vegas.
Oh, that's garbage. You know, Joe, you're spreading half-truths up here.
Oh, really?
We all get money from different sources, ladies and gentlemen, and there's sometimes PACs. Each of those PACs must file exactly where they get their money. There ain't nothing secret out there.
Third Solution, you do not say where you get the money from.
Third Century Solution files and tells everybody where they got their money, Joe. Look it up.
Well, I got it from the horse's mouth, okay?
One end of the horse, anyway. I think the next two people are due to be up, Mr. Charles Savoy and Cindy Lewis-Wolfram.
Chair Ludlow, can you hear me?
There you are, Martha.
No, I've been, I've been listening to all of it evidently. We had to fix it. I just wanted to let you know I'm here and I'm present.
Thank you, Martha.
Okay, you're welcome.
Either one of you, please.
Okay. Charles Savoy, citizen of Oak Grove. I'd like to clarify the record on one issue regarding the value of the ASA contract. The number 30 million keeps being used, and that is a number that does relate to the contract, but it is not the value of the contract. $30 million is the amount of gross billing that the contractor has on their books. What they receive, though, and in fact, their gross revenues or gross receipts are much less. Over the historical course of the past contract, the average was about $12 million. And I only want to bring that out because I see this thing going down the road, particularly when the redundancy issue begins to be talked about as to what money might be out there that could be used by some public agency to provide the services. The other issue that I'd like to talk about is the matter that came up about signing these pledges that were brought forth, and whether or not anyone up there or any politician anywhere receives a campaign contribution is not a bribe. You yourself, John, said that. So I have no issue with people taking campaign contributions. What I do have an issue with is when that kind of a position is taken at this commissioner and using it not for any real purpose other than a political posturing. What we have with that is whether or not some commissioner up there would sign this pledge later will be used against them if they don't, even if they know that it's not a legitimate document, that'll have no real value, but their opponents will use it to say, "Look at this. He wouldn't even sign this document." And that's the real agenda of that. That's my personal belief, and I doubt that anybody in this room who thinks about it carefully will come to another conclusion. The other thing, I'm going to have to end it because I'll just have to come back next week. You're going to see me more than once, I guarantee you. This is not over.
I want to mention that the three people that signed that pledge were the very individuals when they were constituted a no group on AMR. Those are the three people that were impugned online by other people saying we're taking bribes. And you know, it's, you could say that that was a reaction to those allegations unfounded and unfair. So those who signed it thought it was wholly appropriate to make sure that people knew we're not only receiving bribes, we're not receiving any money from any ambulance company, any of them. So again, that's what the majority of the commission did. I think there's a good reason for doing that. Yes, Mr. Savis?
I just want to kind of respond. First of all, I really kind of think that there's a, if you read the pledge, it says a couple of things that are kind of inaccurate, and it suggests that the ambulance companies, somehow we'd be able to track, you know, who's contributing and who's not, when in reality, the way it's written, it only says to those ambulance companies seeking or providing the service. Well, my guess is that right now, that only applies to one company, and the only company that I know that's recently engaged in any campaign contribution or campaign activity is the one that showed up at one of our opponent's fundraiser. So I have not, for the record, I have not asked for, arranged, knowledge of, any contribution towards my campaign, no amount, pennies, or anything else. I have not talked about it, accepted, asked for, offered to, anything whatsoever in the way of a campaign contribution.
Anything fall out of the sky?
Did I leave anything out? Did I leave anything out? So the problem is, the problem really is, is that, you know, we don't know what monies have been contributed already when you try to go through a PAC. And unfortunately, Orstar's been down for two weeks now, and I tried to actually go through and track down some of those campaign contributions and some of those flyers that were used against me in my campaign, Freedom and Responsibility PAC. What was the other one? The Farm, the Farm PAC. Let me see here, just grab that. The Oregon Family Farm Association PAC sent out flyers on behalf of Mr. Ludlow. The Oregon Transformation PAC contributed hundreds of thousands of dollars into Mr. Ludlow's campaign. Third Century Solutions LLC.
Did you say hundreds of thousands? I never got that.
In-kind contribution of approximately, again, I, Orstar's down, so I don't have the exact numbers, but I'm going by newspaper articles is what I'm going by. Now, that could be wrong, but for the most part, once Orstar's back up, I'll try to get some more accurate numbers. But yet, in that whole campaign, I raised a mere $55,000 through a number of people, and I think the Oregon law, the Oregon law, the purpose of the Oregon law, the spirit of the Oregon law is disclosure. It's about expressing and showing to the public who you're getting your money from, not how much, but demonstrating that. And unfortunately, PACs are a way to filter out who's actually supplying the money. And going back to the 2004 article, I found it was very interesting that some monies were somewhat slipped in through PACs, and those were eventually discovered, but it wasn't, it kind of, it's kind of not, it's kind of deceitful in a sense to not disclose that on the front end. If you are who you are and you're going to take a contribution, the Oregon law says disclose it. And I, I'm trying to work on a pledge that captures that, but unfortunately, we cannot find or track in-kind contributions from businesses. We can't track super PAC monies in all types of super PACs. So really, the pledge is somewhat disingenuous because there's only one company that is going to be, that's going to be applied to.
You had mentioned digging down in the 2004. How does that relate to anything to do with me, by the way?
I didn't refer to you. I was referring to the other company that was left out of the pledge.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, I just want to make sure that it was separated from me. In 2004, I wasn't interested in this seat. And so now we have Ms. Wolfram.
Thank you, Chair. It is Louis Wolfram, just to remind you. Cindy Lewis-Wolfram with, in unincorporated Milwaukee. I'm here tonight to speak to the urban renewal situation that keeps getting brought up even though we have a 5-0 vote on it to spend it on direct investment. And yet, it keeps being brought to this commission even after a committee of representatives from the stakeholders in the community and those providers, the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department, and people from this commission, all sat in on the meetings to do with what was going to be needed in that area affected by the urban renewal money. You have made a decision. Why do you keep stirring the pot? You know, you've got some very intelligent people on your staff who bring to, are bringing to you strong ways to spend the money in direct investment, and they've brought to you already, I think it's six projects that need to be taken care of. Need, we forget, urban renewal is not there to help people who can afford to develop and spend money to build companies on their own. It's there to help areas of our community that need assistance to get up to parity with other people in there in that particular area, to give us a good infrastructure for that area. We've spent a lot of time and we've invested a lot of money to have a fund to draw on to do those things. Let's get it done. Let's stop playing with it. Why don't you listen to the people who worked on it for two years instead of disdaining their input? And I guess maybe I'm a little ticked about that because I was one of them, and I'm a citizen, John. I'm not a, I'm not someone who's got a living earned off of making decisions or trying to get urban renewal money. I'm looking so that my neighbors have infrastructure rebuilt and taken care of. As far as this business with your contributions, I'm interested in listening to it because as a new candidate for a county office this year, I'm making sure that we stay very open and we disclose everyone that we utilize, and I want people to know that. But I think that we should not be looking to PACs who are not open to get money raised for our county offices. That's it.
I would hope that everybody who has a concerns with PACs or super PACs would also express that same thing to our legislature, our congressman, and everybody that takes money from PACs or super PACs. Also recommend that you look up those PACs and super PACs where they divulge exactly where their money comes from. As far as stakeholders goes, ladies and gentlemen, I've said it before, no stakeholder should trump the right of people to vote on issues. No stakeholder should, no group of stakeholders should, and that happens too often in this county. Again, I said this county should have learned some lesson when two people were removed from office or ignoring the will of the people on the bridge, Selwood Bridge, urban renewal, light rail, and now this issue. We went through, again, a very interesting study at Clackamas County Business Land several weeks ago, where Hibbits and Associates did a poll. They found out that 15% of the people support incentives for economic development, 1-5, folks. So if that doesn't tell you about urban renewal, enterprise zones, and all the public giveaway, then I don't know what can. But I will continue to advocate that the people have the right to vote on these huge money matters. No, not vote on everything. When you're talking about $5, $10, $15, $20 million, then that takes, I take great interest in that. Yes, a year ago, this commission decided 5-0 to talk about the direct investment. We went into meetings where we said, oh, yeah, okay. Two projects were approved, and then there was going to be some talk about how much money goes to these particular districts, specifically the larger ones, and that's certainly the Sheriff and the Fire District. Now, staff has worked out a program where they get a portion, a small portion of what would have come to them anyway. The Sheriff came here and gave testimony. Give me my $8 million, I know what to do with it. The Fire District came and said, give us our money, we know what to do with that money. So now it's been greatly reduced, and sure, what are they going to say? No, we don't want to participate? They'll take any piece of that they possibly can. Again, the $20 million savings is not savings. It's taking away from every school child in this state, and it continues to happen everywhere. If you ask a lot of union folks, especially fire union people, they'll tell you they don't like urban renewal either because it literally takes money away from their budgets that they normally would be entitled to. Commissioner Savis?
Well, Chair Ludlow, I just, whatever animosity you carry on the urban renewal and its uses, I don't think necessarily applies to what the program has been and what the promises and agreements were made with the district.
and agreements were made with the districts. And, you know, I for one have always tried to honor my agreements, written or not, honor my promises, written or not. And, you know, we had an agreement with those districts in 2011, that we, and we put together a letter and agreement that, two years later, in June of 2013, we would terminate the levy. And we did just that. And with that, with that agreement, that we would form a committee to work on, and we heard from one of those committee members, to work on how to distribute the remainder of those monies and spend them down for the benefit of the community, that frankly, was cut short of the program. Now, granted, you know, it's, it is $48 million, but there was $300 million of projects expected to be spent in that area, and those businesses that moved there, invested there, were anticipating that those would be applied, not to themselves, for the most part, but to the roads and the infrastructure, and that's primarily where the majority of the monies absent, the second compromise given to the districts, but most of that money is going toward road projects. Road projects that we've been doing for years, for decades. Road projects that frankly, this board approved unanimously to approve the projects. This board agreed unanimously that we would hand select the projects that delivered the most assessed value. We agreed. I even offered that, hey, I could possibly get to put into a vote if we could agree on what those projects were, and go 5-0 with the confidence of the voters to say, here's the projects we're going to do, you want to vote on. But we couldn't even do that, because it went down 3-2. We had to, we couldn't get five votes to agree on the projects that we voted on a week earlier. So, you know, the districts in this case, despite, you know, your quotations, told me something different. Even in the recent weeks, said, we want this to happen, we're counting on this to happen, you know, make it happen, and we did. We honored the promises that we made. And why it does keep on recert, and granted, you know, I wasn't around, I think that, you know, and there's a lot of animosity for back in 2008 or '09, when some monies were used and delivered to build a parking structure, okay? All right, I get that. Probably wouldn't have voted for that myself. Light Rail, probably wouldn't have decided to do that either, but you know what? That's not this board. And that's not what this $48 million balance is going towards. These are road projects. And, 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 the money that gas tax would have paid for with those projects, 20, 30 million dollars of those projects, would have been paid for with gas tax money otherwise, that can now be used more towards road maintenance. So it's a win-win. The school district, instead of getting a mere 300 or 250,000 dollars back, gets, going to get a project or something of value of 2.5 million dollars. That's a significant difference. Those dollars in the state here in Clackamas County, and the people who paid a majority of those monies were the businesses that paid that 3% increment. And they're not getting, they're only getting $48 million back, invested in the local roads, not in their coffers, not on their property, but on roads and intersections nearby.
Real quickly, Commissioner Savas, just a correction. Your motion to send it to the voters did not go down 3 to 2. It went down 2 in favor, 2 abstaining, and 1 against. And you had the opportunity to bring it up again for second consideration, but you chose not to.
Oh, I don't think I said motion. I said my offer was that if we could vote on the projects and support the projects, that I would, I would support putting it to a vote.
I don't believe we ever voted on that, but I can be corrected.
That's because we never, we never got to 5-0 on the projects, did we?
Martha, did you want to talk? I've got to go to Commissioner Bernard first.
Why don't you let Commissioner Bernard go first?
Okay, good, thank you.
I was just going to say, you know, we need to put this behind us and move forward and get some projects done.
Who brought it up?
I'm tired of hearing about it. We did vote on it, we moved the projects forward, let's get them done.
Commissioner Schrader.
Well, Chair Ludlow, I just want to say I agree with both of Commissioner Mary Savas and Commissioner Bernard on this. I think it's done, I think it's time to stop campaigning and start governing. That's my only comment.
If by campaigning, you say that sending, wanting to send things to the voters is campaigning, then I will continue to campaign. So, thank you very much. And now, we have all the citizens' communication. Next, we'll have Mr. Krupp. What? Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have a presentation. This is about the status of county roads. I'm going to invite Barbara Cartmill, our interim Director of Transportation and Development, up to the dais to give you that presentation.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. As Administrator Krupp said, I am here to give a little bit of an update on our transportation maintenance effort outreach. And we do have a video to show, but first, I wanted to give you a little bit of information. We've had a busy last three or four weeks, actually probably close to six weeks since we were last here with a brief presentation. We've had really, really good responses from reaching out to our CPOs and our hamlets, making this road presentation. We've gotten engaged people, they've been very receptive, they've had great comments and questions. We have additional questions and frequently asked questions and answers that we've been updating our webpage with. I want to make sure people have access to that webpage. Going to plug it again, www.clackamas.us/streetsmart. And then, I've also got two or three questions that we've gotten back from some of these meetings that I wanted to share with your constituents and your viewing public, just to show how thoughtful everybody really has been as we've gone out and reached out to the public. One question was, does Clackamas County use the paving machine that grinds up existing pavement, melts it, spreads it, and rolls it in one self-contained unit? And I was darn near speechless. I've coined it the magic paving machine, because I really hadn't heard of it before. But I did find out that it's not used in every situation, and it's a very expensive piece of equipment. But our road division does use it, and they contract it on occasion when they want to use it. It's really called a hot in-place recycler. And it does literally rip up the pavement, and heats it up, and then spreads it back down. So, the magic paving machine exists. Another question, a little more serious side, we get is, why do we keep building new facilities when we cannot afford to maintain the facilities that we have? And as you are well aware, we do build new roads, or what we call capital projects, when there's funds available, and they're generally very large amounts of money, and they come from federal funds and funnel through the state, things like that. But when we do build new roads, we try to focus on safety-related projects, or economic development and growth capacity projects. And in most cases, the money to build those projects has to be put to capital projects. It can't be diverted to maintenance. As far as why build a road and then try to maintain it, I think in theory, the idea is that with growth will come additional drivers, which will give additional registrations and additional gas tax, which will equal additional maintenance dollars. That's a great theory. The reality is that as gas efficiencies have increased, people are driving fewer cars, and with no inflation factors, we get fewer dollars to offset the increasing cost of maintenance. So, that's the problem we're providing this outreach to try to solve. And my last question was just a very simple plea. It's like, we aren't all comfortable with computers. Is it possible to set up a phone-in survey similar to the online survey? Well, we looked into that. We could do a call-in survey, but it's pretty expensive to have someone manning phones, personing phones, when people need to call in. So what we have done is, we're going to provide a paper version of the survey with a prepaid envelope, take that out with us. So if you hear of anybody that wants a survey, let us know. We'll take copies with us, encourage people to hand them out to those folks that can't get to a computer. So that's my comments for tonight. I'm certainly open to any questions you might have, but with that, I'm really ready to show our video.
All right, Commissioners, is this okay? Show away.
Thank you.
Roads are the lifeline of our communities and our county, connecting people, goods, and services. We may not often think about how important well-maintained roads are for everyday life, but they are a critical piece of our economy, our safety, and our day-to-day activities. We drive our cars to and from work, to schools, stores, and appointments. Semi-trucks bring in groceries and goods for our local businesses to buy and sell. School buses safely transport our children, and fire trucks and ambulances respond quickly to emergencies. We bike and walk alongside our streets, or ride buses to our destinations. And a healthy road system keeps us safe, creates new jobs, and attracts new business to our area. Whether you live in one of the 16 cities in the county, or in unincorporated Clackamas County, our roads are a vital lifeline to keep our families safe, communities strong, and our economy moving.
We have our warehouse and distribution center for all of Oregon and Idaho and parts of Washington in Clackamas, and we run hundreds of trucks out of there a week. It's tough right now, it's been tough for many years. It's, traffic gets backed up. If the product's not on the shelves on time, it's a good way to start losing customers. So, it's really important to us to be able to move our trucks in and out of there.
We have 1,400 miles of county-owned roads in Clackamas County. Yet, this represents the amount Clackamas County residents pay per month, per vehicle, to maintain this vast network. Only $4.25. That money comes from the county's portion of state gas tax and vehicle registration fees. Unlike Multnomah and Washington Counties, Clackamas County does not have any countywide source of revenue to maintain roads. The condition of this vital asset is getting worse, and some roads already need to be reconstructed at a much greater cost than simple preventative maintenance. This is not news to people who use and have been studying the road system in our county in recent years. In 2008, a county committee of citizens and businesses reported, "We are in a road maintenance emergency. That is the immediate and top priority. Capital needs are also pressing, but not at an emergency level." The challenge has grown since. Federal and state funding has not kept pace with road maintenance costs, and Clackamas County is falling behind attempting to keep up with maintaining our roads. If roads deteriorate, costs to repair them could be 10 times higher than if we did nothing today. As we continue to grow, our roads will become more and more congested. Discussions are underway in Clackamas County, looking for ways to protect and sustain this vital piece of infrastructure. City, county, and community leaders are studying road maintenance priorities for the county and its cities. And a committee of residents from throughout the county is considering ways we can work together to identify long-term road improvements and expansions to maintain a safe and reliable road system, ensuring that Clackamas County remains a great place to live, work, and play, now and for future generations. It will take all of us working together to come up with the best possible solutions to maintain our roads, and provide the safety and economic prosperity that we all know is so important to our quality of life. Join the conversation. Let's not kick this issue down the road.
Thank you, Barbara. Commissioners, any other input or comments? Commissioner Bernard?
Actually, one of the, about building new roads, I think in that picture, you see the cost of congestion. You know, Fred Meyer's truck, taking an hour and a half to get, you know, to one of their stores, because they're sitting on a freeway. The cost of the fuel, the cost of the employee, and the emissions that are released as all those vehicles sit there and, you know, burn fossil fuels, is also of great concern. And I think Commissioner Savas, in her recent, you mentioned that majority of the pollution in the metro area is due to cars stuck in congestion on freeway parking lots. So, it is something important. And anyway, I think that that's why we build roads, and that's why, not to mention the source of funds, that some of the work we have in our plan will reduce congestion and provide safer, you know, driving conditions for people. And those all take maintenance. My always, thing used to always be, is when you plant all those trees down the middle, and you plant all these flowers, and then you don't water them, and no one weeds them, what's the use of putting them there?
Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I'm not sure we know exactly how much the emission contribution is due to congestion in this area, but I do know that the number is 101, last article I saw was 101 billion dollars of wasted fuel and, and lost labor due to congestion. So, how much of that, it's a good chunk of its fuel, a good chunk of its fuel.
All right. Barbara, thank you very much. Good presentation. Commissioners are attending with staff some outreach and education work we've done at CPOs, and anybody who will listen to us, Kiwanis Clubs, et cetera. Trying to get the message out, again, about the condition of our roads. Again, the figure that I kind of dwell on is that 58% of our roads are either in fair or poor condition, and that must improve. So, I've appreciated having done at least one of those, and I have several more scheduled. We got to get a chance to talk to people. And I will tell you that when we talk to people out there, and at the end of the presentation, we ask them, who would be in favor of paying more to get our roads back to where they should be? And I tell you, it's 75% plus every time we ask out there. So that's good, that we're, again, educating people so that they would know what the problem is, and then joining with them and asking, it's one thing to know, recognize the problem, it's another thing to agree to pay for it. So we will see how that outreach culminates here in about April, with, which are, which time our public and government affairs will come forward with some numbers, and also Transportation Development Department, Barb Cartmill, will be bringing some information forward to us. And so, now, we get into a board discussion item. Mr. Krupp?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is a board discussion item and proposed possible action by the board regarding approval of the ambulance service contract with AMR, American Medical Response. I'll ask Cindy Becker, our Director of Health, Housing, and Human Services, along with Mr. Richard Swift, to come to the dais.
I might mention Assistant County Counsel, kind of like a former one, Dave Anderson is here. He's retired once, we pulled him back, told him he had to go back to work. He's going to probably try to retire again, and we'll fix his little red wagon then. Also, I want to announce that Commissioner Smith, I believe, is also online. Is that right, Ernie?
I believe so.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, hi, I'm here.
And Martha, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
There we go, we got a full commission.
Yep.
Here we go.
Good evening, Chair Ludlow, members of the commission. For the record, I'm Cindy Becker, Director of Clackamas County Health, Housing, and Human Services, and with me is Richard Swift, Deputy Director. This evening, we are, excuse me, presenting to you a request to approve the contract with American Medical Response Northwest. The contract terms are for five years, with the potential of extensions not exceeding an additional five years. This has been a contract that has had significant analysis and work by all the commissioners. I also would like at this time to acknowledge the work that's done by, has been done by your staff, Richard Swift, Lane Miller, Larry McDaniels, and Dave Anderson. They've put in a lot of time and effort to do the analysis, do the negotiations, and provide the information that you have asked. We have presented the board with several draft contracts. Those contracts have gone, I'm too close, aren't I?
Popping, yeah.
The contracts have also been posted on the internet. We have invited public comment throughout this two-year process, from the beginning of initiating and soliciting bids through a request for proposal. And so, at this point, we would like to ask the board to approve the contract with AMR.
Well, it was down for a board discussion item, but perhaps the first thing we should do is get a motion on the table, so ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the ambulance contract with American Medical Response.
Second that. Motion been made by Commissioner Bernard. I'll defer to the woman on the phone, that'd be Commissioner Schrader, for the second. And now, we have discussion. Yes, Commissioner Bernard?
Well, first, I know this has been pretty easy for you, but I appreciate all your hard work, answering a lot of the questions that we all had. And I think, you know, in a lot of ways, well, first off, we got a much better deal for the ratepayers, which is one of the main goals. for the ratepayers, which is what one of the main goals was. But we also wanted to make sure that it was sustainable. I think in a lot of ways, some of the partnerships that were created through this process have greatly enhanced the sustainability of this contract. And I appreciate, you know, all the testimony we've had and, and Mr. Anderson for his hard work, and I look forward to putting this behind us and moving forward on more important, well, wait, there's no more important issues than the life and safety of our citizens. Other issues.
Any of the ladies on the phone?
No, have no comment.
All right. Commissioner Savis?
Well, I, I too just want to recognize staff for enduring lots of meetings and lots of criticisms, frankly, and, and I appreciate their patience and professionalism through all of this. I think it was, it was just spectacular, the fact that you withheld, withstood all that. And I, you know, I too am glad that, number one, we, you know, we accomplished what we set out to do. We got a reduction in the rate. We got improvements in service. We got a, a platform for preparing for innovation. We had, all of the fire districts have worked through the EMS Council and approved this and worked with us cooperatively. AMR has been quite cooperative through all of this. So I, I just want to applaud everyone for all their efforts. I mean, I think this has been tremendous. It is unfortunate. I mean, it's no secret, it is unfortunate, we only had one timely bid. And, and, you know, it would have been nice to have, you know, another, another bid, but that's not what happened. And, you know, frankly, we, it was a, it was a competitive bid, and it was competitive. And, and the result of that, or the proof of that, was the 200 or 19%, the 200-some-odd-dollar reduction and the 19% reduction in the cost overall, along with an improved service area. So that's what I, that's what I pretty, pretty well prepared to say today. And again, I just want to make sure everyone that's been involved in this, thank you for your professionalism.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Smith?
Well, would you, I'd like to count, pardon me, I have a question for council. Has the $20 million tort claim been removed?
Commissioner Smith, this is Stephen Madcor, and I am reading a February 19th, 2014 letter from John D. Lorenzo, who represents AMR. And he says, the last paragraph, "As a sign of good faith, my client hereby withdraws its tort claim notice pursuant to ORS 3275 without prejudice." Without prejudice, and legal parlance basically means that they can always refile it, but I would submit that this is sufficient to answer in the affirmative your question. Yes, the tort claim has been withdrawn.
Thank you.
This has been a tumultuous process, and certainly has only involved three commissioners on this commission since the beginning of last year. The previous commission certainly worked on it for a long time as well. Just two weeks ago, the majority was the opposite of what it will vote tonight, because one commissioner switched, and that was because of, in my opinion, political muscling. Now, I do appreciate that staff went through some of my, and Commissioner Smith's concerns, the new minority, I call us, and addressed those with AMR. And I want to thank AMR for timely responses and the flexibility to agree to a great deal, if not all, of those changes. I do appreciate that. But again, you know, Commissioner Savis said, you know, it's competitive bid. Nothing is competitive unless there's competition. There was no competition. And that is, that's the fault of, you know, of the other person that didn't get in on time. But when you look at the, can, all the conversations in the audience should really stop, if you don't mind. Thank you. It amazes me, and amazed me through this time, that really, when an incomplete contract was put forward, that missing key elements, where the RFP said will, shall, and must were simply assigned points, or in the case of the subcontracts that were not submitted on time, we simply allowed the applicant to do that later. Yet we were so hardline that, by golly, if you miss it by two minutes, you're done. But if you missed putting things in that were elements of, of the, of the RFP and demanded by the RFP, that's kind of okay. And I don't think that's kind of okay. Because next time this ever happens, if this ever happens again, where we have one single bid on a $30 million gross billable contract with somebody, and we get one, my intention is to vote to throw that out without opening it and extend it for a month until we get competition. That was the whole reason, I'm told, why the previous commission went out. They wanted to be assured they are getting the absolute best deal out there. So now it's time for Mr. Savis's rebuttal.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I, I respectfully just disagree. Frankly, they, each, each RFP submitted, each proposer, proposer submits that. They don't know what's going to happen. They submit their bid, and they are locked in at that point with that bid. And there's nothing that they can do. If there's two bids submitted, there is nothing they can do to be more competitive after the deadline, after those bids are opened. It's, it's, it's really up to the people to review it. What else can they do to be more competitive?
You're asking me a question?
Well, maybe it's, but, but this, but, but my point, my point is, it is a competitive process. And if, and again, I think the proof is, it's 19% less. If it was not competitive, it would have probably been more money than it would have been. I mean, it's logic. I mean, to me, it's just simple logic. I agree that, yeah, if you had two or three more, then you could have weighed through the formula, the weighting, 25% for, for cost, and, and weighed all of those factors that were part of the weighting. But, you know, it's not, it's not anyone's, it's not anyone in this room's fault that AMR submitted, or not, AMR was the only person who submitted on time. And the other two competitors, or three potentially, did not submit one, or submit one on time.
Commissioner Bernard?
So I really think that in the end, you have to ask yourself, and that's what I ask myself, if this contract was thrown out, would I be assured of a better contract? And, and spend two years putting everyone through this? I don't think you can answer yes. You cannot possibly answer yes. And I think that there was an opportunity for Clackamas Fire District, number one, was put in a really good position for a while there. I don't know that they took advantage of it, but that's, that's their decision. But, you know, the political pressure, the lawsuits, all those things, you know, I'm not in this job, I, actually, I, I should say that one of my jobs, I always thought, as a commissioner, as and as a mayor, is to avoid being sued. And if, if there is a way to avoid being sued, I think we should all seriously look at how we can do that. And so that, 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 yeah, the lawsuit had an impact, but the only impact was, so could we have gotten something better? We can't, can't assure that. Could we, could we eliminate the lawsuit? I, I knew we could do that. And, and a commitment on my part that, as, as long as I'm here, I'm going to work on finding a way, not that we're going to do this, but finding a way to do this a better way and stop doing the same thing over and over and over again, and expecting a better result. And I think that if you threw it out, that's exactly what we'd be doing. Doing it again and hoping we got a better result, and there's no assurance of that. So I'm looking forward to putting this behind us.
I think those are wise words, Commissioner Bernard. We must remember that you were part of a majority up until two weeks ago that said we should go out for another bid. And just in the last two weeks, there's an epiphany evidently that you had and found that, that wasn't the case, that we shouldn't do that. You reserve, I reserve the right for you to change your mind as you wish, but again, to say now that you wouldn't be assured of a better bid when you were really sure of that for months, means that you changed your mind two weeks ago, and that is your right to do so. If we beat this up enough, we may call for the poll, unless any of the ladies on the phone would like to say some last words.
Well, I'm fine.
Okay.
I have nothing to add, except I, I'm glad that we're moving forward with this contract. I think they won it fair and square. I've said that before, and I'm sticking by it.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Ernie, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
No, passes three to two. There goes somebody. There goes.
I'm, I'm still here.
If you, if you happen to exit now, please exit out the back doors as quietly as you can and start your conversations in the hallway, please, as we conduct the remainder, remainder of our business. Now it's time for the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay. For this evening, under the Finance Department, we have approval to purchase two Freightliner dump trucks from McCoy Freightliner for the Department of Transportation and Development. Under elected officials, we have approval of previous business meaning minutes. Technology Services is approval of an OR MAP intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the Organ Department of Revenue for OR MAP tools development. In the Development Agency, we have approval of a grant of easement to Northwest Natural Gas. For Water Environment Services, we have approval of Amendment Number One to the agreement to furnish consulting services between Clackamas County District Number One, Tri-City Service District, and Brown and Caldwell Incorporated for Phase 1B of the BioSolids and Energy Program Development and solids handling planning. And approval of a resolution requesting affirmation of a settlement agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Pacific Seafood Company for wastewater service overbilling. And that will conclude the consent agenda.
All right. Would any commissioner like to remove any of the consent, consent agenda items?
I have a trouble with that word.
So, any further discussion on this? Can I confirm that the two commissioners are still on the phone?
Absolutely.
Only one.
I think Tootie left us.
I'm here.
She had a meeting. All right. We do have Commissioner Schrader on line two. If there's no further discussion or questions or clarification, we'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
We haven't made the motion yet, though.
Martha, would you like to make the motion?
I will move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
I'm glad somebody's keeping track of me. Commissioner Schrader made the motion, Commissioner Bernard seconded it. Now, any further discussion? All right. Ernie, you can take the poll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. Now it's time for the county administrator update. How many months you been here now?
You know, I am finishing up five months.
Are you?
It's, it's hard to believe. It's been a very, very full and invigorating five months.
Well, and from the...
Still have your hair.
Look what happened to me. That's right.
It's still here.
I will say that, speaking on behalf of the commission, we are very happy with Mr. Krupp and the fine job he's done for us. Ask me next month, and I'll tell you the same, I think.
I've been having a blast. You know, every so often, we get these little jewels of really neat little news that's worth sharing with you.
We need some good stuff, so go ahead.
Yeah, I love this stuff. So we got a $6,000 grant from State Farm Insurance to support our Clackamas County Safe Communities Program. This is a program that we run out of our Transportation Engineering Division in the Transportation and Development Department. And the, the grant will support an effort called Posters and Coasters. And it's a contest for high school students to be able to put together artwork and written messages that promote safe driving in our community. So the contest details are going to be posted up at www.clockamisafecommunities.org, and the contest deadline is April 15th. We're going to judge the entries on creativity, the impact of the message, and promotional appeal, and they'll be used out in the community to help promote safe driving. So wanted to share that. It's a neat little thing. It's, I want to thank State Farm Insurance for giving us this small grant to be able to do this. It'll produce great results, I'm sure, so.
That's a good one. You know, towards that end, it might be interesting for the winners to come before the commission and show us their art, do a little recognition for them, and, and get a little promotion for exactly what the theme is.
That's a great idea, so we can plan on that. I had one other thing I wanted to share with you, and this was, I just received this email before coming into the meeting, but on Saturday, April the 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., we are going to have Stand Up 2014. And this is an event to support and honor military and veterans' families. There'll be entertainment, speakers, food, child-friendly activities, and other resources available. It's going to be held at the Gregory Forum at the Clackamas Community College. It's a free public event. There's no registration required. If folks have questions, they can contact Margaret McNamara at 503-650-5737. So we'll advertise this more as the event draws nearer.
It's a good point, and I understand there's a fantastic balloon artist that will be there that day. What quick, I got to self-promote myself, who will tie fun hats and otherwise entertain the children, and that would be me. Looking forward to that, meet some people, and have some fun instead of the serious stuff, so. Anyway, that, well, I think we'll promote that until that time. Just remind me, or you can read it in the record every time, Mr. Krupp. And now it's time for Commissioners Communications. We'll start with Commissioner Savis.
Thank you, Chair. I was kind of wondering, all those balloon folks, is there a franchise, a geographic franchise for Mr. Twisty and others?
Oh. Talk about that one, don't you?
Some lighthearted stuff every now and again.
It's an old sore.
Yeah. And by the way, I was at the car show, and I had the, the Wienermobile was over there at the car show.
Did you?
Yeah, I got a picture of it. I wanted to share that with you.
Let me just preface that. I was once able to drive the Oscar Meyer Wienermobile, when I was Mayor of Wilsonville, across the MJ Lee Ferry. And there was a picture taken and stuff. And the Mr. Twisty thing, I got to explain that, Paul, if you don't mind. I was during the campaign at the, the Clackamas County Fair, and I was tying balloons for free. And the fair director, very nicely, came over and said, you know, "Mr. Ludlow, you can't do that." And I said, "Why? They're free." "Well, Mr. Twisty is upset with you because he's doing it for pay, and he sees these freebies walking around." And I said, "I understand, and I stopped tying balloons." So there's my two references, like, you're not going to get away with that, right?
Well, no, 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 that's, that's, that's fine. I mean, a little lighthearted moment or two is a healthy thing. So I just want to thank, there's a little project in, in the Oak Grove area on Rizley and Kellogg Avenue that used to have a crosswalk where the kids leaving the back of the school or going to the shopping center and back forth would, it terminated right into a culvert, open hole. For years, it's been that way. And so I had fought several years ago, before even being a commissioner, to try to get something that rectified, and, and I continued on. And when I became a commissioner, found out that there's a federal funding program for low-income areas to fix situations like that. So I want to thank the road crew and Oak Lodge Sanitary District and their crew and others for doing this very modest project. I mean, I know a lot of people in the neighborhood wanted to see the road paved all the way down. They wanted to see sidewalk going all the way down, but we, it was a minimal project. We had very little money to work with, and they took care of the, the most unsafe part of it, so that pedestrian, so kids, pedestrians, elderly, those that are handicapped can now use that sidewalk. And it's really refreshing, every time I drive by, I see actually people using it. So I want to thank the road crew again, and Chuck Robbins, and all of the other staff that played a role in this. It wasn't all the road crew. It took a long time to get that federal funding. And again, thanks to Oak Lodge Sanitary District for their part of that as well. You know, briefly, this afternoon, because I've been really going through a lot of literature, former campaign literature, flyers and so forth that came out, I was going through my file, trying to find out all the different PACs, political action committees that, you know, put out flyers, positive flyers for camp, for candidates or for measures, and then also the negative pieces that some candidates choose to use. And kind of was, I'm making a list of all the political action committees and trying to do some tracking as to where those monies come from, which is not so easy to track. But when I came across that, I came across the 3-388 and 3-386 flyers, and I'm still looking for any reference whatsoever that suggested that the voters at that time, or the, the media, or the literature... or the media, or the literature, or anything, had that, that part of this measure, or the language of the measure, or in the voter's pamphlet statement, that somehow $48 million was identified, and that returning the money was something that the voters voted on. I couldn't find it. And I, I'm asking, if there is something out there, please forward it to me, let me know. But I, the literature I did find was, wanted a right to vote on urban renewal debt, wanted to revote on the creation of urban renewal districts. That's what that was about. So I respect that. And, and I took a lot of heat, and some of those flyers were that portrayed me as being against the will of the voters, and somehow, because I did not vote on my ballot, my private ballot at home, which I confessed that I did not vote to support 388 or 3-386. And it's not because I chose not to respect the will of the voters or not to put out to a vote of the people, but rather, what it was really about is really an inequity. And frankly, the inequity being is that the people that actually paid, the money that pays the debt of urban renewal comes from, from the properties and the business owners' properties typically in a business district. That 3% within the boundaries of the district is what pays. They're the taxpayers, but they don't have any say. And the fire districts, or all the districts, all the districts in that area don't have a vote or a say, but yet they're the most impacted. The property owners who chose to make the improvements, that their taxes will go up highly, the money that they pay for, for that tax increment is the money that pays the debt. They're paying, and yet 3-386 would have made people who aren't flipping the cost of that, paying the overall cost of that, that are the least impacted, are somehow have more of a say than the disenfranchised people who didn't have a say. And the other thing that I thought was the most overbearing thing, that I thought was really bothersome, that in order to get a countywide approval for an urban renewal district, you would have to have some incentive for people outside, or people all around the county, to say, "Yeah, there's something in it for me." And by virtue of that, you'd have to create the largest urban renewal district in the history of the county in order to get everyone around the county to vote for it. And I just thought that was, that was flawed as well. So I think there were some shortcomings in that, and I think that's where that 386 fell short. It's not that I didn't want to think that the voters ought to have a vote on substantial debt or a substantial project, but frankly, the people that should, that are impacted, the districts should have a say in that. And when this was in the legislature years back, what was put on the table, and I'll say it again, was put on table is a thing called concurrency, where 75% of the, of the districts affected by that would have, would have a say. They could actually veto that district from ever being created. But in the legislature, things don't always turn out the way you want. And what happened was, they put concurrency in, but only under an amendment. So what that meant was that a district could be created again without the say of the districts, the people that are foregoing that cost, and I think those people need to have a say. So I'm, I'm still, at some point in time, whenever it comes to the opportunity, I will push for concurrency. And I want to somewhat thank the city of Wilsonville for being very thoughtful about that, because that's really what they did when they passed their urban renewal measure, is they put in concurrency and they put it to a vote. So hats off to them. I think that passed by, was it about 70%, 73%, somewhere in there? So kudos to them. And last but not least, our commissioner roundtable is March 5th, first Wednesday of every month, starts at 5:30 in the DSB building. Anyone have anything on their mind, they don't want to come up to the mic here, or want to have a more informal setting, or more than, are welcome and pleased to have a discussion. And I do have one other thing, one last thing. Submitting something on time, how important is that? I remember when I submitted my homework late. And maybe I submitted some good quality work, but you know what? Either the teacher said, "Too bad, we're giving your homework back." You know, when I showed up to the starting line, was running track, when I showed up at the starting line late, too bad. When I was playing in Little League, if I didn't show up on time, too bad, I didn't play the game. And when some friends of mine submitted their voter's pamphlet statements too late at the elections department, there was a deadline, and the clerk did her job and correctly said, "Sorry, it's too late." Deadlines are deadlines, and that's where they're there. The rules are the rules, and we play by the rules. That's all I have, sir.
Commissioner Schrader?
Well, I just want to be briefed tonight. I'm looking forward to actually getting back to Oregon. I've heard you've had some interesting weather there. Between, left during the snow, and I've heard there's been windstorms. I hope things are calmed down there a little bit. I want to just take an opportunity to thank staff, and that's Caroline and Ernie and Trent, because they have consistently supported me, have enabled me to join these meetings, and to, Trent in particular, has kept me totally briefed on happenings out there in the great state of Oregon and in the county. And I just want to say how grateful I am for that, and that I really appreciate the help that staff has given me. So with that, gentlemen, I believe I'll be signing off here pretty quickly.
Well, then we'll have to take your picture down.
Oh, I know. Okay.
Commissioner Bernard?
So today, a historic decision finally came out, and that's the Urban Rural Reserve, the Urban Rural Reserve that's been sitting in the courts for a long time. Actually, I think what it says is that Clackamas County did a good job. It's a very large document. Haven't read it all, but it does, in many ways, suggest that Clackamas County did it right. Visit the Veterans Service Office downstairs, second floor. There were a lot of concerns about privacy, and I was concerned. I went down and looked. I think it's fantastic. There are very good rooms, large offices with views of the memorial. I think that people will be very satisfied. The issue with access, frankly, the cheapest way to solve that is to leave the door open. So the door will be open during business hours so that there won't be a barrier. Last night, I went to Molatla Hamlet, presented an opportunity to talk about our, our issues with transportation funding. And then I wanted to address something else, I almost don't even want to say anything, but light rail funding, $5 million. Now, that decision was made in 2008. If you knew you had $5 million you owed, what would you do? You'd probably save it. And you also knew you could make a deal, and with TriMet to pay less over a longer period of time, you probably would have done that. $5 million is, was not a huge percentage of the city's budget, and Mr. Swanson and I, we paid off one of the biggest debts that had been there for 20 years that, I called it the Taj Mahal, which is the fire station on 32nd and Harrison. That was paid off, which would allow more money to pay the debt. And I'd like to thank Farmers Insurance, because I had a flood at my house, and it's, my renter left the bathtub running, and on the second floor, and there, I have, I mean, it's been like a month and a half, and they're getting it done, and I look forward to seeing it back to shape. But thank you, Farmers Insurance. I just thought I should have thrown in a insurance company, because you mentioned one.
Now, if they contributed to your campaign, all right, fine. I'll let that go.
Yes, my insurance agent did.
Did he?
Yes, absolutely, $100.
Wow, that'll buy a vote. All right. FYI, we had a town hall in Wilsonville, and we've had a lot of town halls, you know, we had five last year, and we're going to have four this year. And it was so rare to have a town hall where I had to coax people to get up in front of the microphone, extremely rare. I mean, I had to just pull them up to that microphone, or we would not have been able to fill the hour and a half we were slated to do. Had some interesting people come forward, and so let me remind you about the next one. April 9th, hosted by the Sandy Chamber of Commerce, Sandy Community Center, 38348, Pioneer Boulevard, Sandy, 7 to 8:30 p.m. So coming up fairly quick, April 9th. September 10th is one, Manestica Ada, and November 12th, Happy Valley, and I'll certainly read more of that later, too. We had a planning meeting to preliminary discuss economic development and land supply goals for Clackamas County, that was yesterday, and additional comments on how to integrate into strategic plan and other interesting information. We will be proceeding on that, the identification of that. You know, you might have read in the newspaper recently about a new grand bargain as it relates to Washington County, and the swapping of lands, and Metro came down against that idea, has lobbied to that extent. And then what a coincidence, sure, it was all coincidence, right, that the Court of Appeals decision, which we have waited for a year, would come out right when they're finally considering that. So Commissioner Bernard has read a portion of that. It is 150 pages long, heavily with legalese. That is being studied by Mr. Chandler, who's our Strategic Policy Administrator, and we will be having a briefing on Tuesday as to how that affects Clackamas County. There are a lot of people opining out there about their interpretations, which may or not, may not be correct. With any decision like this, there is some unsolved or unexplained happenings because of that, and we'll certainly gather those and deal with those as necessary. So we're revealing that, and previously, the Court of Appeals ruling to determine what impact it might have on the status of lands previously classified under the Urban and Rural Reserves process in Clackamas County. The county also continues to monitor and discuss pending legislation, and that is the grand bargain, seeks to modify these land designations. Count of, county commissioners have scheduled a study session again, 8:30, actually, it's on Wednesday, not Tuesday, February 2060, here the results of staff analysis and discuss the implications for Clackamas County. I will be out at the Beaver Creek Hamlets meeting next Wednesday to discuss road maintenance needs. I would encourage anyone interested to come out and see the road show. This is of vital information. Again, we're sharing, and we need to hear from people and what they think about our ideas to take care of our roads. Ladies and gentlemen, that is all I have here before us today. There being no further business before this commission, this meeting is adjourned.